I'd like to call this Village Board Meeting of September 3, 2020, to order. Would the Clerk please take the roll?
President Jackson?
Here.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Muratado?
Here.
Trustee Pujak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Would you all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Trustee Schroeder, I think we start with you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Let me take this off. I'm sorry.
Just pour it down.
All right. The Golden Shears is now accepting appointments at the Center for Senior Citizens. We offer services for both men and women, including haircuts, coloring, and perms. We also offer free consultation so we can help you look and feel your best. At this time, we can only accept reservations. Walk-ins will not be permitted. Please note that the Golden Shear Salon follows the Illinois Department of Public Health Guidelines, which includes face coverings and hand sanitizer. To book your next hair appointment, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at (630) 260-6050. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Schroeder. Trustee Muratado?
Oh, thank you, Mayor. The Village of Glendale Heights remembers Patriots' Day on Friday, September 11, with a silent parade of first responders, vehicles, followed by a candlelit service at 7:15 PM. In order to properly social distance ourselves due to COVID-19, the Patriots' Day ceremony will be held at Camel Park at the flagpole. Face coverings are encouraged. Please join Mayor Jackson, our Village Board of Trustees, police and fire personnel, neighbors, and friends as our community comes together for a moment of silence and reflection on Patriots' Day. And we remember those we lost on September 11, 2001. For more information, please call the Mayor's Office at (630) 909-5303. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Clerk Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
It's not too late for you to do your civic duty and fill out your 2020 census. There are now three convenient ways to be sure that you and your family are counted. You can fill out your 2020 census online at www.2020census.gov, call 844-330-2020, or you can mail in your questionnaire to U.S. Census Bureau, National Processing Center, 1201 East 10th Street, Jefferson, Indiana, 47132. The new date to self-respond is now September 30. Census enumerators are already in our community, knocking on doors to help you fill out your census. Completing your 2020 census affects schools, hospitals, congressional representation, and much more. So be sure to complete your 2020 census because Glendale Heights counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Trustee Light?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
The Glendale Heights Police Department is hosting their 23rd Annual Citizens' Police Academy, beginning this Tuesday, September 8. The Citizens' Police Academy gives participants a realistic view of police work by providing instruction and education on real-life police trainings, arrests, self-defense tactics, firearm safety, and more. Enrollment is free and open to citizens 18 years of age and older who live or work in Glendale Heights. Applications for enrollment can be downloaded and printed from the Village website. For more information, contact the police department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. And it's a lot of fun. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Trustee Sullivan?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
To ensure everyone's health and safety due to COVID-19, Glendale Lakes Golf Club is booking tee times with 12-minute intervals. No walk-ups will be allowed, and you must book your tee time in advance. Tee times can be made up to seven days in advance. Face masks must be worn when checking in for the golf in the golf shop and when using the clubhouse restrooms. Golfers are encouraged to bring their own drinking, water, food, and beverages are available for purchase. To book your tee times, visit www.glandalelakes.com or call the pro shop at (630) 260-0018. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Trustee Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Join us Saturday, October 3, from 10:00 AM to noon for Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board at the Center for Senior Citizens. Please note, there is no Coffee with the Mayor and Village Board in September due to the Labor Day holiday weekend. If you are unable to attend and have any comments, suggestions, or questions for the Mayor or Village Board, please call the Mayor's Office anytime at (630) 909-5303. Sign up for code-red text alerts for emergency information from the Glendale Heights Police Department. Stay informed and updated regarding missing children or people, criminal activity, severe weather updates, safety threats, and more. To be added to the code-red text alerts, simply text GLDANDELPD to 99411. If you have any questions regarding this new service, please contact the Glendale Heights Police Department's non-emergency number at (630) 260-6070. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Register today for the Mission at Home Medical Clinic hosted by Ameda Health in the Village of Glendale Heights. This free clinic will be offering an array of services to those needing assistance. The COVID-19 pandemic has made it even more critical for patients who need health care but are unable to afford the cost. The free medical clinic is only open to those that register in advance and will be held on Saturdays, September 12, and Sundays, September 13, at the Sports Hub. To register, if you have any -- or if you have any questions about the Mission at Home Medical Clinic, please call 855-MY-AMEDA or 855-692-6482. Also, on behalf of the Village of Glendale Heights and Board of Trustees, I want to thank each of you who contributed to another extremely successful food distribution event on Saturday, August 29. As our community continues to struggle with the day-to-day challenges due to the COVID-19 pandemic, I am grateful that so many community partners, volunteers, and village staff have been able to support those who are in need. We are fortunate to have provided food to over 1,150 families at Saturday's food distribution event. The success of this event was due to community members, businesses, and organizations helping to provide numerous volunteers and the help in spreading the word to those that need assistance. We are already starting to plan for additional food distribution events in the coming months. Please continue to follow our social media and visit our website for updates. Once again, thank you to everyone involved in making this event a great success. We will get through this pandemic together, and events like this is how we will help do it. So, a big thank you to everybody. Mike, you looked so nice on Sunday. Did you see the video?
No.
Oh, you gotta turn around, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
That's kind of like the traffic cop used to see on TV dancing. But we should've gotten all the way down the line, because everybody down the line was doing it. Very good. Thanks for donating your time, Mike. Keith Canouts is going to do an announcement tonight because it has to do with the swimming pool. So, it's all yours, Keith.
Thank you, Mayor. The GH2O Aquatic Center is open one last weekend of the season. Stop out this Saturday, Sunday, or Monday to make sure you don't miss one last chance to visit us this season. Register for a two-hour time slot by going to GHPRF.com or by calling the Sports Hub during our adjusted business hours at (630) 260-6060. Fees for each time slot are $4 for residents and $8 for non-residents. Pre-registration is required. Our registration team is available Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM and Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon. Due to the current COVID-19 pandemic, the GH2O Aquatic Center will be operating at a limited capacity and under the strict guidelines and recommendations set forth by the Illinois Department of Public Health and Phase 4 of the Restore Illinois Plan. I also wanted to take this opportunity to thank the Mayor and the Village Board for giving us the opportunity to open this season. We have received many great compliments during this shortened season, including one from a Glendalean resident that read, "Enjoyed your wave machine and pool today with my kids. Glad your Parks Department is able to provide some sense of normalcy during all this. Kudos to you guys." With visitors from 146 different ZIP codes this season, including communities around the state of Illinois and even a few from Texas and California, we are glad we were able to get the pool open for our many guests and look forward to what we hope will be a normal 2021 season.
Thank you, Keith. And you guys did a good job. I heard nothing but compliments. I did mine. Next, we have three proclamations before us. First one being to proclaim the month of September as National Senior Center Month. Next is a proclamation to proclaim the month of September as National Preparedness Month. And the last one is a proclamation to proclaim September as suicide prevention awareness. So if there are no objections, I will sign the proclamations. Okay. Next. On August 5, the Village of Glendale Heights was recognized by the Government Finance Officers Association, GFOA, with the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its fiscal year 2019-2020 budget document. This award is the highest form of recognition in governmental budgeting, and its attainment represents a significant achievement. This will be the seventh straight year in which the Village has received this recognition. This past April, the GFOA awarded the Village of Glendale Heights with the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for its Fiscal Year 2019 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is the CAFER. This is the 37th consecutive year in which the Village has received this award. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financing and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. Both the budget and CAFER documents can be found on the Village's website. Congratulations to the members of executive staff, the entire finance department, for all their efforts in attaining these prestigious recognitions. And a big thank you to all of you. It's great that year after year after year, we receive these awards of excellence, and it's because of all your hard work. But we totally appreciate it. So, thank you. And where's Bill? Please pass on to your department all our thanks. Out of a sincere desire to ensure transparency and accountability of the circumstances around the arrest that took place on June 1, 2020, the Village of Glendale Heights hired Hillard Heinz to conduct an independent review. The completed report finds the Glendale Heights Police Department acted within policy at all times during the arrest. The report also makes several references to the police department's commitment to adhering to policies consistent with the high standards set forth by being an accredited agency with the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies, which is Kalia, nationally recognized as one of the highest forms of accreditation for police agencies. While the report's findings were clear that our police department acted well within the scope of its policies, the Village is also aware that the arrest itself caused concern with community members. Our police department has deep-rooted relationships with the residents of the Glendale Heights and is proud of our connectivity. But we never rest on the present and always look for ways to grow even stronger ties within the community we serve. To that end, the police department will carefully review the additional recommendations contained within the Hillard Heinz report to determine if there are appropriate measures to implement. While our police department meets and in some cases exceeds the very best standards, our commitment remains steadfast to be the best agency possible. Even as standards and expectations of law enforcement agencies continue to evolve across the country, the Glendale Heights community should take comfort in knowing that they have a police department committed to delivering the best possible service to our residents, businesses, and visitors. Thank you. We have Hillard Heinz here tonight to give us a presentation on what their investigation led to. And a big thank you to our police department, Doug, for being so hardworking and always there and caring.
Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here tonight to talk about our independent review. My name is Deborah Kirby. You can take it off.
Thank you.
My name -- practice as you never know. My name is Deborah Kirby, and I am a Senior Vice President of Operations with Hillard Heinz. I was also the person responsible for the oversight of our internal investigation. As you've identified, we're here tonight to talk about the administrative review of the use-of-force incident involving Ms. Russell, which occurred on June 1, 2020. I have an agenda here. We'll talk a little bit about Hillard Heinz. I'll provide a brief introduction of our team, of which two are not here tonight. We'll talk about the key findings in our report. We'll talk about what we saw as part of our policy review, and then we'll wind up with a summary of what we saw and what our investigation means for the Village. What I can tell you is that Hillard Heinz is a nationally recognized risk security management firm. We have five practices of areas that address with security issues across the realm of security services. I oversee the practice that runs both the law enforcement consulting practice as well as the investigations practice. Hillard Heinz, in 2005, was selected by the United States Department of Justice to support its Collaborative Reform Initiative, at which time the U.S. DOJ engaged with police agencies across the United States on key reform issues, particularly focusing on use of force. So our expertise has been well ingrained in our organization. What we do today is we support municipalities and police departments such as that here in Glendale Heights. We work with these agencies on the key issues that are facing them at that time, and it's never easy to have an external organization come in and look at your policies and your practices. But as the Mayor identified earlier, you must have read my speech somehow, is that the key on transparency is important. It shows our commitment to community. It allows that these incidents are reviewed with an independent eye and that they're put within the context of not only what's happening locally, but what's happening nationally. Our team was led by myself, as I identified. I am five years with Hillard Heinz. I continue to work within this area and really helping with primarily law enforcement agencies across the country. My history is I had 28 years in active law enforcement operations, and I also worked overseas with the An Garda Shikana Department of Justice, well, actually, the Irish Department of Justice. And what we did was we established policy and practice for the An Garda Shikana. Also on this investigation was Marcia Thompson. She is our Vice President in Law Enforcement Consulting. Marcia is a civil rights attorney with an EEO background. She also has worked with federal law enforcement agencies as well as trial agencies. Also not present tonight is Ms. Shirley Colvin. She was a former homicide investigator for the Chicago Police Department, and she continues to support our work, particularly when we're working with law enforcement agencies in the area around these types of issues. And finally, with me tonight is Mark Dufry. He is the person who led this investigation, and I will let him talk about himself, and he will also talk about the investigation. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. A thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So what were we asked to do? We were asked to conduct an independent review of a use-of-force incident, and we were asked to provide recommendations on policies and procedures. What we did was we reviewed all of the reports, records, photographs, squad car camera footage, pole camera footage, training records, cellphone video footage, social media footage that was posted, dispatch center telephone, audio, radio audio, and log sheets. We conducted interviews of six officers who were involved in some way in the incident. We canvassed for witnesses, and that included knocking on all the doors of the apartment complex that had proximity to where the incident occurred. We conducted 10 civilian interviews. We reviewed the use-of-force policies of the police department, and we delivered our findings and recommendations in a final report. So, a quick summary of the incident. On June 1, at 9:36 AM, officers were dispatched to 510 Gregory Lane on a call about verbal domestic. When they arrived, bystanders that were there directed their attention to a blue minivan, and seated in that blue minivan was Ms. Tyler Russell. In the van was open beer cans. Open beer cans were on top of the van and outside of the van as well. On the passenger side of the van was a male civilian who was standing beside the passenger side door, which was open. Ms. Russell was seated in the driver's seat. The door was closed. Officer Guerrero requested that Ms. Russell exit the vehicle and come to the rear behind the vehicle to speak with him. Ms. Russell exited the vehicle and walked away from Officer Guerrero to the apartment building nearby. Ms. Russell displayed behavior that was consistent with alcohol intoxication. In the course of their interaction, Ms. Russell would not provide her name, identification, would not participate in the field sobriety test, and she was uncooperative. Officer Guerrero informed her that he was placing her under arrest for DUI. Ms. Russell resisted arrest. Two officers attempted to handcuff her. Eventually, she was handcuffed. Even after being handcuffed, she continued to resist arrest. After she was handcuffed, she bit Officer Guerrero on the bicep, on the right bicep, causing injury. Officer Guerrero struck her once, causing injury. Both were treated at a hospital. So we looked at use of force. We have three findings. The first finding covers all of Officer Guerrero's use of force. The first thing we looked at was Officer Guerrero's arm was near Ms. Russell's neck area. The policies of the police department prohibit the use of chokeholds. If you look at all of the angles of the video that were taken, it's inconclusive whether Officer Guerrero's arm made contact with Ms. Russell's neck. We found his actions were in policy. The policy of the police department allows for different levels of force to gain compliance or protect an officer's safety from someone who's being uncooperative or someone who's resisting. Officer Guerrero used a slow approach. He started with his officer presence. He gave verbal commands to no avail, and eventually, she was restrained with handcuffs. She continued to resist even after she had been handcuffed. What we found was that Officer Guerrero's arm never made contact with or caused pressure to her neck, nor did he restrict air or blood flow. In his statements to us, Officer Guerrero indicated that he reached across the front of her and placed his right hand on her shoulder, and reached behind her and placed his left hand on the back shoulder area to push and pull her forward, to control her when she was resisting and when they were attempting to handcuff her. In her statements to us, Ms. Russell stated, "At no time did Officer Guerrero's arm make contact with or cause pressure to her neck or restrict her air or blood flow." The second use-of-force matter we looked at under our first finding was Officer Guerrero struck Ms. Russell once with a closed fist. Our finding was that that action was compliant with the General Order 120, the use-of-force policy of the police department. Ms. Russell bit Officer Guerrero on the arm, causing injury, an action that made her an aggressive assailant under the police department's policy. The police department's use-of-force policy identifies punches, kicks, and strikes as officer tactics that are allowed in response to aggressive assailants. Officer Guerrero stated he used only that level of force necessary to avoid further injury and defend himself. And the third portion of our first finding that relates to use-of-force by Officer Guerrero relates to his placement of a knee on Ms. Russell's back. Our finding was that the action was compliant with the General Order 120 use-of-force policy. Officer Guerrero stated that he was not certain that both of Ms. Russell's hands were handcuffed. He only observed one of the hands being handcuffed by the assisting officer, and she had continued to resist thereafter. He indicated that he placed his knee on her to control her, and at the point that he was certain that she was handcuffed and saw that she was bleeding, he removed his knee. So the second finding that we touch on is the use-of-force policy requires that medical aid be rendered to someone who's been injured. Ms. Russell was injured. She suffered a laceration to her lip, which caused bleeding. We found that the officer's actions were compliant with the GHPT use-of-force policy guidelines. Our determination was she did suffer injury. However, Officer Guerrero remained there until aid could be rendered. Officer Lambert arrived on the scene with a first-aid kit and immediately began administering first aid to attempt to stop the blood flow. In addition, another officer had dispatched EMS immediately to get them to respond to the area. So we found that they were compliant under this finding. And our third finding relates to the use-of-force policy in regards to training. The GHB policy requires that officers be trained in use-of-force. We reviewed the training records, and we found that the training they received was compliant with the general order for all three officers. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Deborah to review the policy findings.
So one of the advantages of conducting an internal review is that we're able to go beyond the specific scope as you would under a normal internal investigation because we're not bound to the collective bargaining agreement. And the city and the department, I'm sorry, the Village, and the department asked us to do a policy review. to do a policy review. As you identified earlier, Mayor, that the Glen Hales Heights Police Department is CLIA certified. And what that means is that they have achieved a standard of accreditation that is normal with law enforcement standards. However, what we've seen recently and across the nation is that these are changing times in terms of what we expect of our police officers. And so we conducted a review of those policies that we felt were relevant to the incident that occurred on June 1st. As my colleague discussed, Glendale Heights Police Department, I'm just going to say the police department, does have a policy prohibiting the use of a chokehold, and it is consistent with Illinois law. What we noticed, and what most policies in Illinois are similar in the circumstance, is that they don't specifically address restraint on use of chokeholds or grabs around the neck. And so our recommendation is that they consider expanding the training and policy to address any individual holding or contact with the neck, and that the training be clear as to what are the potential consequences such actions. That was not an issue in this case, but it is something that we would recommend consideration of. Also emerging on the national scene as it relates to use of force is the concept of de-escalation. The police department is an early adopter of de-escalation, and they currently have it in their policies, and so that is a good practice. They also have provided training on de-escalation, and they also have a crisis intervention training that also incorporates the concepts of de-escalation. So when my colleague identified that Officer Guerrero did a slow roll, in fact, that was an approach towards de-escalation, verbal engagement, trying to provide some other means rather than engaging directly in force. Our recommendation, however, is that within the use of force policy specific, de-escalation standards and goals are not identified. By placing it within the use of force policy, the goal is to align it in the training and in the memory, the muscle memory of officers, that de-escalation is a force option, and to be able to better expand and engage in those practices. The other issue that we've seen unfortunately create tragic circumstances in other locations when it comes to police use of force is positional affixation. And so that's what occurs usually when a person's under some level of excited delirium or engaged in narcotics, and that there is force placed on their breathing passages by various means and control. The police department does address this in their General Order on Detainee Transport, which was recently updated, and so that is a good practice. Our recommendation is that they consider including this definition and the potential for tragic outcome in their use of force policy. Again, the goal of aligning what is a use of force engagement and making sure that officers process that through the training that they receive on use of force. And so the idea of linking training, as well as this goal of avoiding positional affixation, will ideally avoid such circumstances here in Glendale Heights. This is also an emergency, emerging practice across the nation in terms of law officer use of force, and it's the concept of sanctity of life. And so what that is, is it reemphasizes the belief that all life is sacred. And so when officers, under their constitutional authority, engage in use of force that has potential deadly outcomes, the idea of putting that sanctity of life forward is meant to reinforce and improve upon the officer's perspective of what use of force is. We recommend that the police department consider implementing this as a value statement in its policy, and that too would be consistent in what we're seeing evolve across national Duty to intervene is an issue that we're also seeing come up locally as well as nationally. The police department does have, within its code of conduct, a duty to intervene in dangerous situations. However, what we've seen in other cities is that as a result of some of the tragic circumstances, is that officers sometimes don't feel empowered to engage with other officers while they're engaged in use of force. And so we recommend that the police department consider including this specific duty within its use of force policy. And in particular, it creates a framework on the duty to intervene, de-escalation, sanctity of life, and ensuring that officers, as they're trained on the use of force, are able to reinforce the goals that we've seen in the policies of the department in their actual application and engagement in use of force. Finally, not related specifically to the use of force incident, is scene management. What we saw on this scene, and many of you have seen this video, is that there was a lot of movement on this scene. And what we also have seen in other cities and across the nation is that fluid scenes sometimes result in chaotic circumstances that can also exacerbate use of force. And so we recommend that the department review this video, review what happened, and identify what its officers are facing when they respond to these types of scenes, and making sure that the training is sufficient to support the officers in not only controlling people on the scene, but also ensuring their protection, as well as those of their arrestees. So what we can say is that, I reiterate what you say, Mayor, is that this police department demonstrates its professionalism and its commitment. The CLIA standard accreditation is an important goal that they've achieved, and our recommendations around policy are meant to only improve upon what the department already has. The key issue about policy, and it's never a very exciting topic, but it's what guides and establishes the standards for officers. And so our framework of the actions of Officer Guerrero are framed within the concept of policy. And so that's why it becomes important, because that's what guides our agencies as they go forward. What we also know is that the expectations of local law enforcement are changing, and it's a tough time to be an officer, and it's a tough time to try to navigate these waters in terms of what are our expectations of police officers, and what are our communities' rights and their expectations. And so what we recommend here today, and we believe that there is a commitment on the part of the department, as well as the city, is to take these recommendations into consideration and really look at them to say, are there things that we can improve? Because in the end, as you've also identified earlier, that is the goal of local law enforcement, is that they work within the communities, they are the community, and making sure that they're able to deliver the service that they're supposed to deliver. And so while we did not find any policy violations, and I would say that our policy recommendations are somewhat limited, what we believe is that that comprehensive approach and viewpoint is what will continue to allow the department to improve, and really to continue some of the standards that they've already established. At this end, we've had a very brief presentation, and I'm open, as is my colleague, for any questions that you may have relative to the work that we've done.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody have any questions for the chief?
I have one. I just want to thank our police department. They're always up to standard, and I'm very proud of our entire department.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and board, if I can just follow up and just say thank you to Mark and Debra and Hillard Heinz, all the people that really came in. You know, we're always nervous, right, when somebody comes in and wants to inspect what we're doing, right? No matter who, what division you're in, or what department you're in, if somebody from outside of your division, your department wants to come in and inspect what you're doing, it sends some uncomfortableness around everyone. I just want to thank Hillard Heinz. Mark and Debra made it a very kind of seamless process. The facts were the facts, and we were going to go with whatever it is that they found out in the facts in all their interviews. They were very objective in their approach and very conversational in their approach. It was very, I was very commendable during all the interviews with everyone, how conversational they were, and with everybody. And that matters when you're trying to put people at ease and get to the truth. And I think their investigation outlines the truth in this case, and we are taking to heart their recommendations when it comes to policy. My CLIA coordinator, who's in charge of all of our policies, has been off on some FMLA time for some stuff. She's due back next week, part-time, 20 hours a week, and she's going to be 20 hours a week for a couple more weeks. But we'll start going through all of this policies. CLIA, I don't know if you guys know this, Deb, but CLIA has actually come out and mandated duty to intervene and de-escalation be in policy immediately, and they did give us a year, a couple months ago, they gave us a year to get in policy, and they just updated that to immediate. So we'll be updating our policies to conform with CLIA's duty to intervene and de-escalation to get into our use of force. It's already in other parts of the policy, but we're going to be putting that right into our use of force policy. So are there any questions for me?
Chief, when will CLIA be back for recertification, and will this have an effect on our...
So we are due at the end of the year for our annual review.
Okay.
Next year will be our recert for CLIA. But end of this year, we have a, just a computer review. They do it remotely. And then next year, we have an onsite and a recert.
Okay. Thank you.
Doug, what about body cams? With everything going on, I know it's a question a lot of people are asking, and I'd like to know your...
So from this investigation and just what's going on in the world right now and country right now, Glendale Heights has had, Mike, I think you were instrumental in bringing all the watch guard squad car cameras to us about 15 years ago, and we've had squad car cameras for about 15, 17 years, somewhere in that ballpark. We've not had body cams. And since this incident has taken place, we have interviewed the three primary body cam companies at Service Illinois. We've gotten proposals from all of them. We have formed a committee that we'll be meeting next week or the week after to start going through the three proposals we've received. From that, we're going to be sending out a second request for proposal from body cam manufacturers to really hone in on what the officers think is important and what administration thinks is important, to really get us the best system for us. Unfortunately, body cams aren't cheap, and they're all about the same price. What you're looking at is features. Body cameras, as we stand today, to outfit our entire department, because everybody's going to need their own individual body cam, is about $100,000-ish a year, give or take a couple thousand either way, depending on the year. But that's for all new squad car cameras, all new body cams. So, you know, 19 squad car cameras and 65-ish body cameras. So that's a cost that we're going to have to look at and weigh, but that's, once we have it, it's an ongoing cost for eternity. It is, we're at a point in law enforcement right now that I think body cams are an essential tool that we have to have with us all the time, because we are being videotaped every time we go on something. And it's important for our officers and the public to know that we're protecting them and protecting our officers and protecting the village by having our own point of view of every incident. So as far as body cams go, we are actively working on it. We've met with all three major manufacturers that Service Illinois, and we're putting out more information in the next few weeks, but ballpark, it's $100,000 a year.
I think we can figure out how to get there. It actually benefits everybody.
It does.
And you've always got somebody out there that shows their view of it, but not necessarily...
Every officer working right now, almost to an officer that I've spoken to, wants them for their own protection and for the protection of citizens and for, you know, quite honestly, the protection of everybody. So, you know, we have a very young department, so technologies are game, so...
Well, I think we can put that on one of our top priority lists. But you're doing de-escalation training, and you've done that for a while.
Yeah, we have been doing, thank you for that question. We have been actively pursuing de-escalation training and crisis intervention training and crisis communication training for many, many, many years, right? Starting back 2015, 2016, when CIT first came out, crisis intervention training, we started sending people to crisis intervention training. Crisis intervention training is a 40-hour class. I am proud to say that, as we stand today, every officer, eligible officer, which means you get to have at least two years on, that is eligible, including myself, has been to the 40-hour crisis intervention class, put on somewhere in the state of DuPage County. We are one of six departments in Illinois to receive an award from the International Association Chief of Police for having, they won mine campaign, for having 100% of our officers trained. And that award and that goal was the reason that we have sent 30-some officers in the last three years that needed to get trained, trained in that 40-hour class. Trying to get people to a 40-hour class takes a lot of work, and to get that many people through that was one of the goals we set, and Deputy Chief Oliver achieved that goal with a lot of prodding on my part, on him of me, to try and get me to a 40-hour class, because going away from the department for 40 hours is tough if you're not on vacation. De-escalation training, that was also a goal of Deputy Chief Oliver every year, was to get us de-escalation training. From 2017 through 2019, we have sent 23 officers to de-escalation-specific classes, eight-hour, 16-hour, de-escalation-specific class. We've also sent 15 officers to a class called Crisis Communication Tactics, right? So we have 38 officers trained in specifically de-escalation or crisis communication on top of the CIT class, right? So that's training on top of crisis intervention training. They've been to de-escalation and crisis communication on top of CIT. We have made a commitment to this, which is why you saw the way that Officer Guerrero engaged on that day, every step he took to try and not use force. And we see that every day. 2019, we had 26 use of force incidents in 2019. Some of those involved us pointing a handgun at people, some of those involved us using a taser, pointing a taser at somebody. We never discharged a weapon, never discharged a taser in 2019. In 2019, of those 26 use of force incidents, we didn't use a weapon of any kind other than hand-to-hand combat to impact somebody. We used physical force and body weight to control every use of force we did. We didn't use a baton, we didn't taser somebody, we didn't pepper spray somebody. So I'm pretty proud of how our officers use their presence, and thank you to the board that we have enough people working the street every day, that we can have four or five officers on the scene and use our presence and verbal skills and communication skills to really try and not only just de-escalate, but gain compliance through presence. When you have two officers on scene, as we've seen throughout the country, it doesn't go so well. When you have three or four or five officers on scene, that doesn't happen very often. So thank you for keeping us staffed, until we retire everybody next week, but thank you for keeping us staffed, because that matters. And having presence matters, and having, you know, trained officers that are using all of these skills matters. You know, mental health calls since COVID has hit are up significantly. Our use of forces in the last three weeks related to mental health are up significantly, significantly. I just signed off on six of them, I think. Of those, we still have not used a weapon. Everything we do is body weight and enough people there to control.
We appreciate that. You guys have to put up with a lot. I've seen it, and how you can stand there and take some of the comments and everything that are...
Well, guys are trained, guys have...
Right up in your face. I don't know, but...
Thank you, but the guys are well-trained.
You guys do it tremendously.
You know, something else that shouldn't be lost in all of this is not included in the training that I just talked about, is we have three certified hostage negotiators that have been to an immense amount of training to be hostage negotiators, two of which are on the merit, DuPage County merit hostage negotiation team, right? So, you know, they're in detectives, but they're there on the street whenever something happens, and we have that much more training of people that can try and defuse something before it becomes more prolonged and more active. We also have seven... We also have seven fully-trained peer support officers. And those peer support officers are trained in crisis communication. And how do you deal with, with somebody who's going through a hard time and get them to be in a positive, right? So, those seven trained officers are all in patrol, right? And, uh, they're run by Sergeant Dari, right? So, we have six officers in patrol that are peer support officers. And that, they're, believe it or not, getting used all the time by our officers trying to come and talk about stuff. So, more people that are trained, not outside of our basic training, but trained by our chaplain and counseling on how to actually counsel people. So, all of that stuff comes into play and matters. Trustee Light?
I just wanted to say thank you to you, to the police department. I mean, all the, the actions you guys have taken, uh, even down to the last fire that we had here in town, the, the heroic actions and the way you guys conduct yourself is just outstanding. I've got a lot of compliments from a lot of residents, so thank you very much for everything.
Thank you, it's appreciated.
Pat? Uh, I, I know you're looking into the body cams. Do you know if there's a, some kind of maintenance fee on the, on these cameras?
So, yes. Uh, one, one manufacturer at, at 30 months, you get new body cams, right? You get the upgraded version of what we had 30 months. And one is like 32 months, you get new body cams. But the, the contract for every manufacturer is five years, so halfway through it, you get new equipment.
Okay, so in other words, if they break down to something, you just...
Yep.
Can give you a new one?
Yep, mail it back, and they just send us a new one.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I just wanted to say this, and I'm not saying it because everyone else is saying it, but I think our police department is really an exceptional one for more reasons than one. And I get tired of hearing that the police are always wrong. First of all, if you've done something and the police approach you, just stand there and go with him. I mean, he's certainly not gonna hurt you. And if this girl is resisting arrest and then bites this guy like a dog, I mean, this is ridiculous. And the money that we have to waste showing that our policemen didn't do anything wrong is a little ridiculous. And, uh, and I hate to say this, but sometimes, you know what? They have to know that the police are there to protect us. Uh, for us to just accept, you know, everybody's right, but the policeman, that isn't right either. And it's your job to make sure that people, that the police aren't, uh, enforcing or, or hurting these people. And I don't think that they are. Our police department hasn't got that kind of a reputation.
No, and I, I concur. Um, I'm really not gonna comment though, but thank you. We, I appreciate the commentary.
No, but you know what? I, I know I go back, because I'm a little bit older than a lot of people. But I remember when Daley said, uh, this is the old Daley, when he said, "You know what? If there's looters, shoot to kill." You know what? There were no more looters.
We can't do that today.
I know you can't, but what I'm trying to say is, they've gotta know that you have authority and, and they've got to abide by that. When they need help, who do they call but you? So, I mean, you're not always wrong.
No, we're generally right.
And I'm trying to, it's always been wrong.
No, we're, so, one comment, uh, compliance matters. And when people comply with the police, 99.9% of the time, there's a positive outcome. It's just the way it is.
All right, I just had to say that.
Thank you. Anything else, Mayor?
One more thing, Doug. I know there was a video posted from one of our in-squad cameras of the fire.
Yes.
That shows how brave our officers were. Could we see that maybe next meeting?
So, there, you're, yeah, so next meeting, we're gonna have everything wrapped up with that case. Uh, we're gonna be, uh, hopefully, well, we will be, uh, making some award that night. Uh, we'll have a, we'll have a video of the incident, a snippet of it. And then, uh, you know, next week's gonna be kinda, our next board meeting is kinda gonna be a police meeting, sorry, but...
That's okay.
A lot of stuff going on in the police department. Um, so, uh, yes, next meeting will be, uh, a, a positive meeting for the police and our officers and everybody else.
Great, they deserve it.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward.
We got another presentation.
Move with the mayor.
Where?
20, move with the mayor.
Move with the mayor challenge?
For seven.
Oh, well, I don't have a number seven on mine.
Okay.
So, I guess we'll go to Keith for the number seven I don't have.
I'm back, Mayor. Uh, thank you again for just a few moments. I'm here with Chris Navarro, who's gonna be called up here. You can come on up that way when we tag off here. Um, Chris is one of my recreation supervisors, and we want to introduce a program that we've just begun called Move with the Mayor. This is a, uh, program that we're doing with the Village of Glendale Heights and the National Forum for Heart Disease and Stroke Prevention. They have a national campaign that runs from August 1st through September 29th. We're kinda entering in a little bit later. But our campaign is gonna run a little bit different. We're gonna run ours from September 7th through December 5th. So, we got the flipper. Hold on. We did practice this, we're, we're on our way here. Uh, the goal of this campaign is to work with mayors across the country to challenge their communities to do, to be more physically active and lower the risk for heart disease. And for us, our way of doing that is to do a community outreach program. From 9/7, September 7th through September 29th, the Village of Glendale Heights will showcase helpful information, both virtual and in-person, activities to help keep our community active. So, we've themed them out into three different weeks. The first week is It Takes a Village. The second week is Move with Purpose. And the third week is Get By with a Little Help from My Friends, which is really about pets. So, we're gonna do a little bit with the pets and the pet community. So, um, to kinda give a little bit more information on how this program is gonna run and some other offshoots of this program, I'm gonna have Chris come forward now.
Thank you, Keith. Uh, so like Keith mentioned, there's a couple parts to this campaign. Uh, the second part of the campaign is the DuPage County Move with the Mayor Walking Challenge. So, this was actually started by the mayor of West Chicago. And it's basically a little friendly competition between participating towns, uh, in the DuPage County area to see who can get the most steps, uh, for, for their city. So, we're proud to join, and we're up to the challenge. And residents can help at home, um, by downloading the Hecker Walk app. And, uh, basically, you, you link it up to your phone, and we'll go over that in a little bit. And you can help Glendale Heights reach that number-one spot on the city leaderboard. Oh, there we go. Uh, and then another thing that we're doing, uh, right here within the village is that the Village Health and Wellness Committee has been kind enough to help us out in hosting a additional event that they, um, in addition to the one that they always do, uh, which will be a walking challenge for employees and their families. So, basically, that will start September 6th and run through December 5th, where we are encouraging employees and their families to walk outside of, obviously, their work hours at home and kinda log those hours, and there'll be some fun stuff along the way for them. Uh, so we're just, you know, we're encouraging them to help us out and, uh, help Glendale Heights overall and get more steps and hopefully win that competition. We get bragging rights, so that'll be fun. So, for everyone at home who's wondering how they can help, uh, like I mentioned, you can visit www.hackerhealth.com/wchicago and download the Hecker Walk app to your smartphone. From there, uh, you will select the Move with the Mayor West Chicago option. And then you will fill out the required fields, and this part is very important. You wanna make sure that you select Glendale Heights as your city team. Uh, so, once you've got that done, you link your phone with any wearable device that you have, a Fitbit, a smartwatch, or something like that, so that your steps are being tracked. Uh, and then you can see a couple, uh, examples, that's actually mine. Um, I need to get walking more a little bit, but, um, it'll track your steps and it'll kind of, um, you, you'll see where you rank among the, uh, every, everyone that's using it and then how the cities rank as well. So, it's really exciting. Uh, we hope our residents are able to help us out with that. And, um, we encourage everyone here as well to download it on their phone and help us out as well.
And if you're looking for more information, I know we've presented quite a bit quickly. Uh, if you go to the GHPRF, uh, website, and we will have a page up by next week that has all this information on it. The communities that are participating are West Chicago, Hanover Park, Bartlett, Glen Ellen, and Glendale Heights. So, those are our competitors. Um, I want everybody to know that this is based on the average amount of steps. So, the more people we have and the more stepping that we have, the better off we are. Um, even though we've had like a few people from staff log in, we moved up to fourth place already today. Then we worked our way back down. Some other people must have saw that they, we were walking too much or something, so now they're working their way back up. But I'm hoping that everybody will join us on this. Please check out the website. We will have different events and different options up there for ways to get more active. We've got some planned free classes. And we really wanna make sure that we're helping out with the village and getting that heart health that we've talked about and that's so important here. So, uh, we thank you for the time, and we look forward to the Village of Glendale Heights working hard. And the chief has a question.
So, the question was, if you don't have a Fitbit, could you still try? So, you can definitely do it, your phone, like I said, if you have a smartphone, it still tracks those steps. It might not be as accurate, but every little bit counts, so we still encourage you, um, even if it's just with your phone, to get involved. Any other questions?
If you need help putting it on your phone?
You can contact me.
Okay.
If you need help, but we'll have, yeah, if you visit the website, we'll have all the information. It's, it's super simple. It's, it takes about two minutes, not even, to, to get it, set it up on your phone. And once you have it, it's, it's ready to go. You don't really need to touch it for anything, unless you wanna see where you stand at.
And just so everybody knows, not only, not only does it do by teams, but it also does individuals. So, um, like, I know that we have a couple of staff members that for the day are in the top 10 already. So, I mean, this is one of those fun things that really, we hope that the friendly competition will help boost, um, this opportunity for the village to come together. And you know what? We wanna make sure that the Village of Glendale Heights is at the top of that list, so we'll work hard to do that. Thank you.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. Any questions, anybody? Now, we go to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, you have the consent agenda before you. What is your pleasure? Accept. On the consent agenda, before we vote on it, number four and number five need to be removed. So, if someone would want to make... Trustee Sullivan?
Uh, motion to approve a consent agenda.
Second.
Is there a second?
Yes, Bill.
Take Bill's second.
Oh, okay, sorry. Roll call vote.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. There is no old business. New business, number one, is a motion to waive first reading on new business item number two. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading is waived on number two, which is an ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6. Uh, first reading has been waived. This would be ordinance number 2020-50. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yep.
Ordinance 2020-50 is approved. Number three, an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 entitled Traffic Schedules of Title VII entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic of the Village Code of the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. This eliminates school-related parking restrictions on President Street. This is first reading. Number four, an ordinance to deny an application for two amendments to the previously approved conditional-use permit for outdoor storage of vehicles on the premises, commonly known as 387 East North Avenue in the Village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. That's Edson's Auto Body. It's from the August 20th, 2020 Committee of the Hall, and that is first reading. We are now back to public discussion of agenda items. If there's anyone in the public that wishes to address this board on an agenda item, please step forward. Being none, a motion to adjourn would be in order. Trustee Sullivan?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Everybody have a very safe Labor Day weekend.
Are we ready?
Yep.
I call this Committee of, of the Hall of September 3rd to order. Would the clerk please note his president?
Noted.
Um, any additions or deletions? Pat?
Uh, Glenn Oaks.
Hey, Trustee Sullivan, Trustee Sullivan, could we remove, um, number one on discussion regarding?
Number one?
On discussion regarding, yes.
On the Committee of the Hall?
Yes.
Okay, where is that? Oh, okay, all right, sorry. Remove it?
Remove it, please, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I was not looking there. Okay. All right, committee recommendations. Plan Commission. A recommendation to approve an application for conditional use to allow the outdoor storage of eight construction-type trailers, four company-owned pickup trucks, a roll-off dumpster, and one propane storage cage with up to eight propane tanks for the property located at 155 International Boulevard, Nexus Solutions, Inc. Trustee Light?
Move it to the board with the recommendation to concur.
Discussion. Somebody second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Discussion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, second, Glenn Oaks.
Uh, this is probably for Joanne. Glenn Oaks, Fessinworth School. Glenn Oaks is running that building? All right, what, what exactly is it?
Uh, Glenn Oaks is operating, actually, I'm, I'm hoping Mike may be able to help me out with it a little bit. A day school, uh, for students who cannot otherwise attend public school. I don't know if Mike can elaborate a little bit, sorry.
Sure, I'm sorry. Um, so, the, the... So, it's the Glenn Oaks Therapeutic Day School, and most of the kids that go there have some anxiety issues in attending regular mainstream schools. So, these are not necessarily behavior disorder students, but these are students that would not ordinarily be able to function well and successfully in a standard school.
Okay, when Glenn Oaks were standing there, they didn't say nothing about they were going to make that a school. I was under the impression that, I was told that there would be no parking, I would have no problem parking on Stevenson anymore, buses, cars, nothing. And Chief is taking care of the problem, because the first time, there was buses all over the place, both sides of the street. I mean, you couldn't even drive. And that wasn't, I was under the impression that that was not to be.
The, and when Dr. Williams presented in regards to what was going to be occurring there, I do believe he did talk about it being a school. I think the idea was is that all of the students are provided their own, provided transportation, so there would be no drop-off, pickup of students by parents. So, there are school, small school buses that arrive, there are transport vans, et cetera. There has been some issue at the very beginning here, going through the growing pains of getting it open and seeing how the internal flow is going to have to work on the campus itself. And I know the chief has been working with that, with the school and his school resource officers, and hopefully, we're able to get that under control very soon.
Yeah, I mean, the chief's doing a good job on it, but now, but now I passed by the other day, the parking of buses on Monosa, and that's a cul-de-sac.
Right, and I would defer to the chief because I know we've had some complaints from residents, and the chief is working on trying to work with Dr. Williams to resolve the parking and the lineup issue with the trucks.
Yeah, at this point, it's not the school district, it's Glenn Oaks Therapeutic Day School, because they're the lesser, the lessie of the building.
How many students?
I think they're over 200.
Well, currently, they're at 50% capacity. It will be close to the 200 number. We have to educate them, we've educated them on how they can turn out of the parking lot. We have to educate them on...
We have to educate them on where they can park the buses. They're there, I mean, for a full day. Some of these kids come from 50, 60 miles away, because it's the only school they can attend, so there's a lot of transportation issues. I do not recall ever having a transportation issue when they were in the industrial park. And the parking lot they have now is bigger than what was in the industrial park. So, we're going to have to, you know, educate and speak with the people at the day school to just really work on where they can be and all that kind of stuff. SROs have been out there almost every day, monitoring the traffic and that kind of stuff. We'll keep them out there, you know, next week. They've been monitoring the construction noise that's out there at 6:00 AM, they've stopped that. We got complaints of them, because they're still doing work internally at Pheasant Ridge, the old Pheasant Ridge, so we've stopped that. We'll continue to educate the bus drivers on what they can do while they wait, preferably go to a restaurant and spend money in town and...
That's a very good idea, because I told a lot of people, I said, "Don't worry about it, you're not going to have any more parking there." And now, I'm getting phone calls and say, "Pat, you're full of," you know, I don't want to say what they tell me, but I mean, it's worse now than it was before. At least they had cars parked. Now, they got buses.
We also did have a question from a neighbor in regard to the outside speakers, and I contacted the school district because they are still the landlord, and is what Kevin Hooper from the school district told me. So, he's trying to work with Glenn Oaks as well. So, I think maybe the chief's working with Glenn Oaks, and we'll coordinate that effort.
They're using the speaker system as a recall for the kids that were outside and teachers that were outside, because their phone systems were down and they couldn't, I don't know, call or something, I don't know. But hopefully, that's rectified with the outdoor noise, and we'll continue to work on the bus issue.
Aye, thank you.
Joanne?
Put my mask back on.
If these bus drivers need a place to park, tell them to go to Stratford. That place is empty. They got plenty of parking there, believe me.
Okay.
And it's not in town.
Plenty of parking there, empty.
Okay. We have nothing else.
Yes, one thing, Sharon. Could you ask for public comment? Because I think we missed that at the beginning and...
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the board?
No.
Okay, being none, we have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Light?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, good night.
Thank you, good night.